Morning, we're going to start the work session for September fourth, roll call please. Brad, Kurt and Bob, Layla.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Item one, agenda receivers proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, she carries, item two, discussion second floor administrative wing renovations.
You want me to?
Alright.
Still one minute.
I'm still calibrating my eyes to this uh handout.
It it'll be it'll be up on the screen too.
Yeah, it'll be up on the screen.
It's nice to have it on one sheet, but yeah.
And that's just really for reference, there's nothing, there's no new information on that sheet that you have there, so um.
Not working, oh.
Click that away. Yeah, I don't know, I guess I'm gonna go ahead. Oh, really? Try a bit of heat.
Well, I mean, just for interactive like wifi connection.
Oh, I was able to connect wifi.
So.
Are you different, okay.
She is, I know.
Oh, no. Blunt on the right.
Alright, we got that for you. Yeah, that's what I said.
Blunt on the new one. Yeah, I was gonna just say sympathy. Congrats. Let's go some curves. Yeah, it's just complex. So first. Then you're going.
That's also.
Okay, that's good, that's right, you do that here.
That's, is that.
Yeah, that's right. That's kind of.
He tends to leave a original invite.
No, I sent I sent him the the normal or juicy.
Yes, that's what we need to be on, and so.
Is this a sign?
Cause you're you're showing. Correct, yeah, I'm just.
Downstairs didn't work, my way upstairs is a little bit weird.
It comes down to, we can, I think we can, I think we can take shame on his. Yeah, we can do that too. Dawn of the day.
You know, folks, it's like you too, we're just doing a meeting or what?
It's just a it's just a way to judge if anybody requests.
We've just, yeah, that's fine.
Don't join them.
That's what I was gonna comment like.
Fifty bucks, yeah.
Yeah, so easy morning. Alright, we're good. I used your link.
Is there a more than?
Uh, yeah. These guys there. There, just for reference, but yeah.
I'm sorry, you didn't.
Only meeting organizers and presenters. I guess. There we go.
Hey, hey, alright.
Alright, so today, we are going to discuss kind of some of the options that have, we've been discussing Rory and I and we're envisioning. Rory and Carol have been discussing a little bit about some redevelopment happening on the second floor. Uh, some of the work has already happened here with the new server room that was constructed here and recently finished um on the west side of the hallway. Knowing that uh the IT department really wanted to move over there with that server and and be kind of around that server, it's offered up some opportunities of what redevelopment could happen here on the second floor. More supervisors office and the finance department. What you have in front of you today is a hard copy and one I'm presenting right now is really just the existing plan. We do show the redevelopment happening there in the, I'll say southwest corner. That change? Try hit that. There, there we go. Uh, down here, um, you know, this was a preliminary layout that we had gone through just to test fit to make sure that server room was gonna fit and how the IT department wanted to be laid out there. We really haven't gotten into the design phase at all with this, that was just a preliminary layout. Today is really a kickoff to to hear from you, the board of supervisors, to understand what your uh wants and needs are for for this uh space that's across the hall now that IT would potentially be uh vacated and more space available for board supervisors and finance, so. Really, this is conversational today, there's, I don't have bullet points on an agenda, uh I really just wanna hear from the board of supervisors here what your thoughts are. Um, and let's talk about how we take this project forward. We really haven't formulated our fee proposal yet for our design services because we don't know what that scope of work is, and so that's what today's about, is try to identify that scope of work and what we're gonna take forward. So, that said, um. I think I I know that you guys maybe have some opinions or some thoughts of what you want to explore and some options here as we we think about who's where in the courthouse. Uh, part of that conversation is is the county attorney, what we do at the county attorney's office, that's currently located on the most level. So, I'm just gonna open it up and start to to hear from from you and let's start a conversation.
County attorney's office, not gonna be a great place to start, I mean.
Yeah, I think probably. I feel confident about a move from the engineer's office, which probably impacts this a little bit more, we're looking at. I know there's been some conversation about HR, for instance, if that were to move up, does it make sense for them to take on some of that engineer space, cause the engineer space isn't enough for the county attorney's office.
Right, it is not, correct.
So, um, I and I don't know if that's even. Rory's probably had a little bit more conversation, I think, with other departments on what their wants or needs or.
Yeah, so. Obviously, we've had several conversations here in the last several months with the, you know, our facilities meetings that we've been having uh with regards to the county attorneys. Um, we actually just uh finished up a uh, uh, an inspection of the uh, uh, one of the properties that we were looking at for potential move for the county attorneys. Uh, so we're still waiting that feedback. Um, I think at one point, we looked at the board of supervisors uh wing, including this meeting area as one option to uh, potentially relocate, could be county attorneys, then what do we do with the board of supervisors? And so, we've been kind of all over the board on this, uh. I think what I presented, well, I know what I presented at budget time was really just looking at uh the existing occupants of the space, so looking at uh the board supervisors. Um, looking at that space and getting uh, getting a home base for uh, for the staff. Uh, right now, you know, with with where Rory's at and Joe's at, um, utilizing more of the window space along the perimeter of the area. Uh, that's kind of what I envisioned was uh opening that space up, putting the offices along the perimeter, utilizing the windows, getting glass fronts. Uh, use utilizing the natural lighting, uh getting a more welcoming lobby area, conference room, and focusing on security. Um, so those are kind of the, that's kind of where I landed at budget time when I presented the the dollar amounts that I did at that time.
So.
Did we think that there is room like in that wing when we look at that rent, I mean, if we put us, if we were somewhere else relocated in this board office wing, is that large enough with county attorneys?
I think it would be large enough if we included this room as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it'd be close.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, we would have to take over this room that we're in today.
And obviously, then that changes quite a bit what we originally had talked about as far as that budget time, uh, those dollar amounts.
Okay, and have we ever asked Brian if there's, like if his staff, I I mean, just because we have some space that's gonna come available, obviously with Kathy's relocation and that type of thing. You know, does everyone have to be in the same office? That's not been a question that.
For the attorney?
Yes, I mean, you know, located there, I mean, uh sometimes it's convenient, but some of the staff positions that don't have to be.
Yeah, as far as uh conversations that we've had with the county attorney, we have to go back to like twenty one, twenty two, when we were kind of doing the study for the entire courthouse, and so we haven't had any more conversations since then. And that, we didn't ask that question at that time.
Yeah, okay, I just.
The extent of our, my conversation with the attorneys was collections, so separating collections and attorneys, um, they are comfortable with leaving collections as is. So that's really about the extent of the conversations that we've had with the the attorneys.
So we've done some preliminary work, and that's what I'm I'm showing here, we do have some options to basically redevelop your space as it is today, keep you in the same location and and finance for that matter. Kind of been a collective office setting, um, you know, again, these are just very preliminary, high level, we did some furniture layouts, just to give you some reference to of scale. Um, I I think once you start to see furniture in those spaces, uh Maggie's done a good job of laying that out, that, you know, these types of spaces can work. What's kind of challenging with this building is is the structural grid layout in those columns, and you guys know all about that in your current offices and kind of the jogs and the walls and that sort of thing. But, you know, we're trying to work within those existing constraints to to provide some different options for you, again, we're we're not really talking in this level of detail today, it's more about what are the big moves, you know? What are we gonna do with county attorney, the possibility of engineers moving out and board supervisors, where do you want to be long term, how's that impact finance? And so those are kind of all of the the variables that we need to sort through to understand kind of the scope of work that we need to redevelop here in the courthouse. So we can start to assign some dollars to that as well.
So those, the color coded changes you've got there, really, just the distinguishing.
Distinguishing between board supervisors and finance or offices and other types of spaces, yeah, support spaces are one color, offices are one color, and then meeting and conference rooms are another.
I don't always feel like an old man, but can you zoom in just a little bit? Mark this dig on the calendar.
Sorry. So, I mean, this is kind of an open office concept with a kind of racetrack with offices around the perimeter, and then your shared and support spaces in the middle, so everybody has that equal access to those things. Uh, creating a a reception lobby space up front that's kind of still open and utilizing that existing opening that's there. What we're trying to do is really limit that renovation scope to uh stay within the boundaries and not creep out into the hallway. So it's redevelopment for a while, so to do something like this, um, it would have, obviously have to be phased, and I think the possibility of it being phased that IT happens first, they move out, we start to renovate their space, and then you guys start to shuffle around a little bit. Knowing that you guys aren't here full time either, you know, that might help as as well.
So I'll, I'll say for myself, um. I'm not a big believer in the open lobby concept, I think we have five elected officials who are public facing. Two of whom have had direct harassment, um, I I I think it's, I think there's just a security measure there that I'm more comfortable with a more counter barrier, counter, some some sort of structure there, if we've got some space within the door to meet with folks, that's fine, but I I I'm really.
You want some separated office space, workspace that is is behind the behind the scenes.
Yeah.
Have the opportunity to come up and be public facing when you need to.
Correct, yeah, correct, that, just the idea of opening the door and you're in the space.
Understood.
I think it's just too much of a liability, um, if we're if we're gonna open the can, let's 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 fix that one.
That reception area in particular. I know we need a door in there, but I think it ought to be a countertop and not chairs for a waiting area.
Yeah.
The other part of this is that finance is also located in this too, so we have to hear from finance and what their needs are from the public facing side of things. And how do we start to marry those two concepts together with what the board supervisors needs and what the finance needs and how how do those work together? I mean, obviously, uh like I said, these are very high level concepts, we haven't talked to anybody yet about these layouts, so, um, I guess the first question is, do we stay here on second floor or for these offices?
I'm fine with it, I I think we're already looking at doing something different for the county attorney, so I don't think this is necessarily an option for that.
As the owner person, I don't know if you're talking about trying to add another building to our stable, but.
Yeah.
I'm getting, you know, we we're over that three fifty cap, I I am concerned about maintenance costs if we add another facility, so I I am actually quite intrigued. By if we really think the attorneys could fit in this whole space. And vice versa, we can all fit in their space, and I don't know those answers, I don't know how to do that, but it.
Well, and and that that would be part of.
Whereas.
Exactly, we would need.
And really, so, really what we need from you today is, do we look, continue to look for those as options as we jump into design phases? Uh, because just.
Just changes the amount of time and and focus that we spend on the project versus, okay, we're just gonna renovate second floor, we don't have to worry about.
Right, I know, much simpler, it is much simpler.
Yeah, and in short term.
Honestly.
But I don't know about the long term.
Yeah, and honestly, and and if that's something you wanna do is continue to explore those options, we can sort through those in schematic design that first phase and say, make a decision. We're not, we're not, we're gonna avoid the basement, we're gonna stay on second floor, or we're gonna take the whole thing, we're gonna do that, and that's that's fine, we can make that decision later. But if we're gonna expand to include that that basement option right now, that's really what we need to know as a design team so we can provide those options to you.
Are you talking about sketches or beyond that?
Um, probably about this level of detail, test fits, um, talk about the pros and cons of those test fits, we don't have to solve every single detail with that, but there's other implications other than just floor plan layouts, we have to talk about mechanicals and infrastructure and that sort of thing that go along with these renovations, uh that have dollar impacts for the project, so. It may come down to a dollar decision.
Yeah, we don't know that yet.
We just don't know, right.
So Joe, you think of moving.
This is Chris.
This room downstairs along with the board office?
Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, I was gonna, um, I was wondering, you know, would the current staff in the board office area, um, would we fit in the engineers area? If we were to give this area up to the attorneys?
I just tried to kind of rough that out, it looked.
Uh, engineers is a bit smaller.
Yeah.
Engineers is a bit smaller.
And we're already, and it's already too small, so that feels like a no to me.
Yeah.
I actually think that might be the say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be convenient if that would work, but you know.
And and I heard HR mentioned as well, HR would fit in there.
Sure.
In 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 the engineers, if you want to bring them upstairs, um, so they're located next to the county attorney in the lower level right now, and so you know, provides more more expansion opportunity in the basement too, if you're thinking.
Yep.
Uh, attorney and HR.
Uh, how does, uh, you know, Michelle and Gabby and and, you know, Lori, you know, this, how do you feel if we were moved into the basement?
Well, I will give my opinion first, and they can certainly weigh in. Um, I like light, this is the first office I've been in in many years. For a lot of years, I was in a, I was in a central basement with no window, and I miss the natural light. But I can tell you, the four of us really don't have light now, and and that's just, so I, I feel like this room, honestly, windows are kind of a waste in this room. We use it once or twice a week for a couple hours, so to me, it's not, and windows aren't good for trying to have things on camera either usually, so I feel like a meeting room, really, that kind of space maybe makes more sense in the lower level. And and I'm hopeful that if we go down there, we could somehow get some kind of egress window, something to get some more light into it. Would it be my dream home? No, but I, you know, like I said, none of us have natural light today, I I try.
Because you're off of the exterior wall, you're in the middle.
None of us, right, I sometimes get some light in the morning coming through one of the supervisor's offices will come down that center hall, but.
Sure.
Not, doesn't even happen all times of the year, and it doesn't happen by afternoon, so we really, I'm not sure, but that's a big hit points to the staff.
So, if if the directive today is to include the basement in the first part of our 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 planning, um, we can explore the window well option that we've talked about numerous times Rory and I have, uh, it it it's just additional cost, and we can kind of cost that out and be, have that a variable part of the decision.
We're in the dream mode right now.
Understood, and that's, you, let's get everything out on the table today to look at those options and and give us kind of a scope of work to take forward here.
And I don't really even consider it the dream mode, quite honestly, that would be beyond probably with with some of the doctors, but I was gonna say just what is realistic for us to look at and consider and.
Yeah.
Makes the most sense for location for us and our office, I know, but as far as county attorneys, you know, that was one of the things I think we talked about with your office as well. Uh, uh, that there are so many things you can do in a basement, not location now.
Yeah.
With options that make it much better than when people do really want lighting and that type of thing, but.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is, what is the current plan for the engineer's space right now, is there?
So we're exploring that option, then potentially relocating to Longfellow, I mean, that's all.
I was wondering if the recorder, and then for the recorder, if, I mean, if that was an option, we moved down there and then our space was used in conjunction with what the other offices were, cause we do need more space for our passports, we're just now in that, basically, that small office room right there, and that's, I've talked to Rory and Carol about needing more space there. As a possibility, could the recorder be moved down there and all that other space utilized? Just throwing that out there.
No, thanks, appreciate it, because I think sometimes, like I say, you look from a customer standpoint, coming off the elevator and where, but they go to your office a lot too, so I think sometimes.
But having us down there on that end of the hall instead of all of our families in this way.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, and.
It'd be a little quieter for us.
Cause being here alone in.
Yes.
So, there was one option that we had talked about too, is uh maybe taking over the corridor and making apartment office suite, you know, not accessible to the public. If we can meet all of our egress requirements for this floor with stairwells and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Can we gain more space by taking over that corridor, so if the recorder's office does potentially relocate, you know? That space is easily, county attorney can easily fit in there, uh and maybe some other services, or just rethink, if we rethink how finance and and supervisors offices are laid out. And IT for that matter.
There was a possibility, if we pulled that off, we could do both the attorneys and board.
Potentially.
Yeah.
So, the scope that we're talking about is getting bigger and bigger.
But and and not to complicate things even more, but you know, as throughout the last year, another conversation that's been had is adding on to the courthouse. You know, where sometimes you get to a point where you look at the cost to renovate, remodel versus new, and then where do we, where do we end up there?
Well, you know, the the maintenance and and all the continuing costs for having another building, um, just complicates it and makes it worse for us in the future, as far as planning, whether it's finances, Michelle's talking about, but us and what we do for taxes, and Brian's always said from a county attorney's standpoint, I think he's ideally, he'd love to be here. It was just the space wasn't working for them, and so we started looking at what it does, you know, but if there's a way to make it all work and everybody. That seems to me ideal, I mean, if there is a way to make this work somehow, whether it's shifting of your offices and ours and looking at to which need, which offices need to be where and.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We've got some back office kind of space that we need in the board office too, it's not all that, that's just such a congested, inefficient, um, way we are right now. So, you know, some of those things that.
So, always a wasted space.
Yep.
Our what?
Always a wasted space.
So.
You mean now we're here.
With the. With this, we're we're talking about a lot of potential options.
Yeah, we are.
We really need to establish what our priorities are, and so let's, let me ask you a few questions really.
Yeah.
And to start understanding, you know, from the supervisor's standpoint, what are your priorities when you jump into a project like this? So we can start to focus on those things and make sure those things happen, and and also hear from the other departments too, that could be potentially be affected by that, uh, in what their priorities are as well, so let's start there. You know, with a project like this. Why do we need to redevelop? I'm hearing some inefficiency of space right now, just kind of unorganized space, waste of space.
Daylight.
Daylight is another priority, I'm hearing as well, yeah, um, security.
I I'm kind of probably one of the people that stirred this pot in the beginning, and my specific reason is because I don't have, I need another office or the other finance person.
Okay.
So, right now.
You're short of space right now, is what you're saying.
Right, it just doesn't work, our receptionist used to have a huge area, now she has a tiny area with no workspace, it's not adequate, and my staff person has more space than he needs, but what he doesn't have is separation from the everybody that comes in the office. He, people think he's the receptionist and he's not, man.
Sure.
So, that's I, where I started, why I started asking if something could be done differently, because it just, it it isn't very.
Okay.
That was only done to be temporary.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So.
Get the same way.
I just thought it would. That's where I started from.
But your basic questions, I think you kind of hit on as far as what we're, what we need and what.
Yeah, what should we achieve in a project like this, yeah?
Security, uh, uh, on the point of sunlight. I'd say prioritizing staff sunlight would be. Cause we've all spent time in in the.
Cave.
In the cave.
Oh, and I did, I didn't mind it then, yeah, it could, it could come out.
Right, like. Yeah, um, but I think folks that are here forty hours a week.
Yeah.
Pre- my preference, I think, would be for for staff to to get that.
Yeah, work environment matters.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the drawing you got up there now for the corner, if you blow that up a little higher.
Yep.
So you've got three meeting rooms in that corner, both corners there on the left.
Yeah, this base, so, let me, let me back up a second here. This is the space program, if we were just to look at numbers, that what we developed back in twenty twenty two, when we did space programming for the entire courthouse. This space is a little bit bigger than what the actual requests were, the needs were at that time, so we're, we we have some leftover space, and that's what you're seeing in the corner here is a little bit of leftover space. Now, we do have some other options here that start to, you know, reorganize that, put offices in that corner, you know, different ways that we can uh better utilize. Now, we do have some other options here that start to, you know, reorganize that, put offices in that corner, you know, different ways that we can uh better utilize the entire space. And those, again, those are all details that we'd work out when we actually get into the project if if we were to redevelop this space, so. Yeah, I I don't want you to get too hung up on those number of spaces yet, you know, these were just some test fits based on some numbers we established three years ago.
Or the locations, cause I would.
Yeah, and the needs have probably changed since then, like like Michelle was saying, she's out of space right now, she needs another office.
Yeah.
How many, how many meeting spaces, conference room spaces do we need in this sort of quadrant of the building? Cause right, we're showing three or do we need, and I I know that you said, don't get too hung up on it, but I think it's worthwhile, do we need a small meeting space and a larger meeting space?
Yeah.
For the larger meeting space, can we utilize the basement instead of, right, like.
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, tho- those are all things that we can consider, but I I do think you need a meeting space in here, especially your concept of, hey, we're we're kind of behind the scenes. And if we need to meet with somebody, we're gonna meet with somebody up front, not next to our offices.
And that's what we did at previous to having our communications person, and that was, whether that could be expanded somewhat, cause it was a small conference room, but it was still a conference room and we said too.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're, I guess, other scenarios of it is letting other staff utilize a small room as needed too, but it was something.
Yeah. Yeah, if you need a larger meeting space, there's other options in the building for that, yeah.
That we do have, yeah.
I will say, as a, as a department, had the previous conference room we had in the board supervisors area was very nice because you could meet with two supervisors at a time in there outside of their office.
So, I'm like, well, you had higher marketing.
Sorry.
The benefits outweigh that.
Yeah, we still need to accomplish her.
Yes, no, I get it.
Nothing personal.
I know, when I initially.
I guess.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna say, you know, I guess my priorities are, you know, like Tavis said, you know, the uh sunlight for the full-time employees. But also, I do, you know, one thing I'm, I guess I feel like I'm still waiting on is, is the results of that um inspection of the property that we're considering. You know, just to know whether that's even a viable, you know, option for us or not, but but I'm very interested in seeing how we can maximize. The space within the courthouse, you know, as a whole. Just cause I am also, like Michelle mentioned, you know, worried about us being up against that levy cap and how much we can, you know, levy to to continue to maintain buildings. And I always have the concern about what could happen at Pinecrest to the, you know, state. I think they underutilize their office spaces and um eventually could maybe rightsize that and we'd we'd be, we'd have a lot of more space on our hands.
Great, that means that you too, Pinecrest.
They're already.
And as it sits right now, um, you know, once we're all, well, I should say, once we're all done with the project, uh we're going to have vacant space on the fifth floor. Um, but for the most part, uh floors one through four, I believe are going to be occupied, uh for the most part, a hundred percent. But we have, we will have that fifth floor east of that floor and we are setting that up with uh updated HVAC, um just as a backup.
Now, can that be used as storage for our books and all that?
The, yeah, the fifth floor west is gonna be identified as all storage moving forward. Needs to just be stored.
It needs to just be stored.
Yeah, good idea.
The preference would be not to put people on the fifth floor, we wanna, we wanna shut down the restaurants there, uh we want to reduce the amount of. Mechanicals on that fifth floor just because of the issues that we've had in the past.
I would. I think as we factor all the space, um, I've gotten the sense that we need to have a serious talk about the utilization of the the law library uh area. You know, the, cause we're, I mean, essentially we're in a position that we've got to provide this, all the space for the stage and some of it is definitely being underutilized. Hammer, also, the same very state government is the one putting this, these levy restrictions on us and so, um, I think there's gonna need to be a really serious conversation about those spaces.
I agree, Chris.
I think we all do, yeah.
When I, you know, to, you know, Michelle's point of sort of what started her interest in this, part of my interest was the idea of having HR and and developing a full administrative wing. Amanda's here now, um, I know that there's been some sort of. Yeah, let me take a stance on it, um, or your preference or comfort or any of that stance.
Yeah. Sure, so, yeah, originally, you know, thinking about that, sorry, um, but of course, you know, we also think about, well, a very tight way in the basement. Our employees feel comfortable to come to HR, I can tell you when HR comes up to second floor, people's neck snap, cause it's like, oh, HR is here. And I don't want that for employees to also be that close to the board office, they come for a number of reasons, you know, FMLA, ADA, personal reasons, so. That, I did, you know, that was originally that and then I told you, it's maybe not, actually, man, as I think about this more, maybe we really should just kind of.
Stay separate.
Stay separate, our, when we first talked about the whole space assessment and everything, we were closest with auditor's office with payroll and so that was kind of like, oh, well. You know, if I had a preference, like, we just wanna be closer to them, but I also wanna be mindful of like. With the confidentiality, with people comfortable coming to HR, even though we do a lot of our work over the phone, teams, things like that, I still want people to feel like they can walk in and not be on display, that they're walking into HR.
Sure.
So, that's just, but yeah, so that was kind of the original thought, to squeeze us into that where IT is at and then it was like, no, maybe we shouldn't. And then, of course, we added marketing, yeah.
How do you feel about being on the second floor, even if you were separated from the rest of the administration?
I think we're fine, but I think being over off to the side or, um, you know, I mean, the nice thing about being on that end is that the stairwell from the treasurer's office, people can get it from the basement from. There's other routes, but it's nice, they come to the basement and it's like, well, you know, you don't know if they're going after the parking lot in the basement, it's not like.
Yeah.
Your supervisor's watching you walk over to HR and like, wonder why they're going there, um, but honestly, employees are pretty open with their supervisors, be like, hey, I'm gonna run to, I gotta talk about this at FMLA or this time off. But, um, or they just call us, so if we were, I don't wanna be on display like the recorder's office or like, um, you know, assessors, but.
Sure.
If you all were to stay in the basement, you're comfortable there, maybe with some adjustments?
Fairly comfortable, yeah, I mean, like everyone else, of course, they like, it'd be nice, but we're pretty used to it, I guess.
Yeah.
They have great neighbors.
We do have good neighbors. And our space is pretty modern, I will say, but yeah, if you add egress window, I think you'd be pretty comfortable, so, you know, I mean, but we do like the space if it works for us.
Sure.
Um.
So.
Yeah.
Everybody keeps saying egress window, yeah, egress, the, the thing that you want, or is daylight the thing you want? Cause those are two different things.
Well, I think.
Daylight.
Okay, okay, all right, that's right, egress window, yeah.
You're so good at the palette.
But we.
Cause if we need egress, that means it has to come way down.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's our.
That's, that's smart too.
That's how I.
More like a daylight, like how summer, just daylight window or something like that, but, um, but yeah, we, engineers was the other thought we thought about, but obviously, if Sandy, they have these, you know, we're.
Sure, got it, okay, that makes sense.
Open in, I mean, I do think the basement is a good future space somewhere, um, but, so yeah, we, we're open, but that was originally what we found and then we kind of pivoted away from us being right next to the board.
I hadn't thought of reporters in engineer space. What it does to that hallway is really interesting.
Interesting to put to what we have here.
Yeah.
Is it possible to look at, when you're designing there, using that hallway we have there on the side of the stairwell? Putting the break area, like the sinks and cabinets along that walkway?
It's just not wide enough.
Just not wide enough, okay.
You're talking about hallway, I hear, correct, or when you're talking about using.
Yeah, I was saying, generally, if we're moving reporters over to engineers, really effectively at the end of the assessor's office.
Yeah, part of it draw a box that that showed that.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's this, right?
Yep.
That you could potentially make this in one big office suite with a single entrance.
Yeah.
And you have some services off of that single entrance. If the egress would work out, now that that's a code thing that we need to work through, but.
This is Lori Wermers, the admin aide for the board, um, just one comment that I have is, um, with the proximity of the board office being right by passports. Which generates a lot of uh traffic and with also the board meeting going on, uh just kind of keeping that thought process of the reason why people are coming to. The courthouse is they're doing business with passports, um, maybe that could be a conversation of kind of utilizing. Sound and traffic, whether interferes with, you know, um, business that might occur over to. Uh, the board of supervisors and then also when they're conducting meetings, the amount of noise level that's going on during that time when the meeting's going on. I know, um, sometimes having it by the elevator has caused noise, um, pollution during the meetings, so just keeping that in mind.
Yeah, I I I hear what you're saying there and, um, you know, we have to look at the volume generating activities in the courthouse and how that relates to the administrative functions of the of the courthouse as well. And the board supervisors' public meetings and what finance needs and I I think the idea of creating a suite like this orange box that you're seeing there is is. A strong option, uh, given the fact that you could potentially create a board supervisor's meeting room like this, near the front, with an open door to the suite, not to the hallway. You know, so those activities aren't overlapping, that volume of traffic coming to get passports or going to the assessors or recorder's office really are outside of that suite. And you still meet all of your public meeting requirements with an open door policy.
If we were able to move the recorder down to the engineer's space, would there be enough more of the pass, I mean, could I incorporate the passport office down there also?
We'd have to test it, I'm not sure.
I, okay.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that is what I would hope, if we can move everything.
Yeah. Get all of your functions.
Right, right.
Yeah, that that makes sense, we'd have to test it, I don't know.
And that would eliminate the, the noise congestion right there.
Yeah, yeah. So it sounds like this, the direction is we're gonna, we're gonna step back into that kind of master plan phase that we did a few years ago to reassess a few things about the big moves. Make some decisions, hone in on the scope and then and take a scope forward with what you guys are comfortable with. Because we're talking about some some whole entire department movement and even from floor to floor.
And if we are looking at that county engineer's office too, where we took some of that hall space, that creates a lot more, when you're talking about looking for passports or whatever.
Yeah.
Of having a better, that you do too, okay.
Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah.
Take a step back and look at the big picture, department wise, where you want to end up, so if the options are in the basement.
So you'll look at.
We'll we'll include the basement, we'll look at the second floor, first floor, we're not skipping over first floor.
Yeah.
I'd rather measure twice.
What's that?
I'd rather measure twice and spend more, so I would.
Yeah, sure, yep.
Yeah, kinda thinking about the the law library too, I, one test fit that would be interesting would be the uh clerk of courts on the first floor. Then you would have all of your state functions on, on your third floor with the exception of the courtrooms.
Yeah.
But you would have the treasures and then potentially, uh, another camera clerk of courts could be potentially HR, something like that. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Let's square his mind.
Sorry.
The basement though, it has a lot of space too with that wasted hallway, we've talked about that, like, there's a tremendous amount of space down there that's.
I just know the library has been a topic of conversation for several years, how it's underutilized, so I know maybe taking this opportunity to to look at how we can utilize that better like Chris had mentioned.
You guys have a timeframe that you wanna make some decisions by that correlates with a budget or anything like that?
You wouldn't be able to.
I think that was all done by December.
I think that always.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have a better feel for it come November.
Okay.
Because we'll know where we're at with engineers with that vote.
Correct.
That'll give us some timeline, cause at that point, we won't be able to collect that, all that building, all that's, we're looking at three years out at that point. Right by the time that building, that Longfellow is built, engineers, yeah.
We can. Agitate, that's probably, because, yeah, it it depends on how you decide upon the construction, you know, I have six million built in to be paid for. Which I have an email drafted, I haven't sent you yet, about using property taxes to repay that. If you decide not to, then I can't start collecting for the building until July of twenty-sixth, if it passes this November.
Yep.
So that, that might lengthen it, I don't know. Otherwise, the first plan. Just depended when it was ready, it it probably could go a little faster.
Yeah, if we weren't looking at moving recorders to engineers and just.
No, I mean the, I just mean the engineering building, if you went looking at local option, it can probably go a little faster. But that's a question that we haven't answered yet, so, and we we do have, we have sold, I have some money in the bank today. But it would be probably for the limited rearranging, the back chairs on the Titanic.
The small show, yeah. Yeah.
Um, but, you know, it also takes time to design it and, but that's, it might more, so.
Yeah, it's, I'll do Titanic.
Yeah, yeah.
Back chairs anywhere else is good.
Yeah. Anytime, be a client, not that.
Rearranging, how's that, just rearranging.
Artemis.
Yeah.
Before we go down, we'll enjoy the space.
Rory, when do you think we will have the report back on the potential property?
He said no later than thirty days.
Okay.
They finished it up yesterday, so.
Have to write it up now?
Pardon me?
And they have to write it up then, so.
Then what I would do is receive it and try to put some dollar amounts to whatever findings they have, just so we can have kind of an idea. And that would be pretty rough, but it'd be to the best of our abilities.
So I guess, I'd say, let's come back to this mid-November, once we have an idea of where we're, you know, at least what.
What's gonna be available.
Well, like engineer and county attorney, we've had some time to absorb, um, that report, what our next step is there. And then that'll dictate whether this thing has to be that.
Yeah, it's got, right, like, right. Um, is there anything in the meantime that you guys wanna see test fit wise, just to maybe look at some options or some ideas that we can be working ahead of time? Or do you just want us to pause until mid-November and you do have more information there?
I think pause at this point. We gotta get some more, better ideas about what we're working with.
Would we wanna test fit, possibly the recorders in the engineering, just to see what that might look like?
Yeah.
I think we need to test fit anyway, so.
I mean, these are quick and simple things to do, we're just gonna do a quick space program and see if it if it even fits in there.
Yeah.
We're not gonna do office layouts or anything like that, that's a much more detailed conversation.
Yeah.
This is just a a space grab.
Yeah.
To see if it would actually fit.
Yeah, I think so.
I think it would make, it would make sense to.
Okay.
Do the test, yeah.
See if the shoe fits.
See what it is, yeah, at least we have some information.
Gotta try it on, yeah.
It makes us look at projects differently too, we don't have the test fits for certain things that we wanna arrange and then we look at other options.
Okay. Leading up to that, what I'd like to do then, um, if you wanna start to explore some options for Florida in November, at least get an agreement in place with with the county. Um, and this can just be an as-needed type of agreement, you know, that it's not a guaranteed thing or, you know, a lump sum or anything like that, it's an as-needed type of agreement. It's how we identify that scope, what you actually wanna design and then we can move forward with that. So I can, I can get a draft out there, buddy, and if there's questions about that, I'll work through Rory, uh, to to get that in place.
So where could, they'd be doing the test fit and at the same time, we'd be seeing it local site option, sales tax passes and meaning after that immediately kind of, and then.
Meaning after that and meaning after we get our.
And this, yeah, yeah.
At some point, because. At some point, because we're working with the engineers well and looking at that Longfellow facility, you'll kind of see what the what the options are for out there and if that passes in November.
Yeah.
And you know, I know Kathy is looking for some some imagery and some information to to get the word out of what the potentials are for that, so I'm working with her on that. I'm sure you guys will see that before it goes public. Okay. Questions for us? I I think um mid-November then we'll we'll regroup and reestablish those priorities, um because we'll have different information at that that point. It was a good conversation today just to at least start thinking about all of the dominoes that are impacted uh with movements like this, so. Gives us a better idea too on how to strategize uh our first steps and what we what we're gonna present to you guys too, so it was helpful for us today.
Well, we had a benchmark, our base plan, so now we can kind of shift it out.
Yeah, and and that's okay. I mean, we didn't spend a ton of time putting these plans together today. It was really just of what we knew from three years ago and what Rory and I had been talking about. Maybe came up some else.
All subject to change, right? We have to be flexible. Cause we'll change tomorrow.
You're just writing on paper at this point.
We'll change later, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate it, Tim.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Some more to the door?
Some of it.